Um, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Thanks.
It must be zoning because Gordon's here. How are you?
How's that?
These are the new ones.
Anything exciting happening over in the west side?
How's it going?
It's great.
It's a lever.
I'll try to keep it. There's cranes all over this town, but none of them seem to be-
It's new fangled.
Private industry. All state money and the clinic.
I know.
Clinic is spending-
I find crazy things in them.
Thank God for their money. They're building a fifteen million dollar lab right across the street from my office.
Is that right?
I couldn't be any happier. I had, I had somebody get really upset about the development there. You know, Jacksonville Road. It's actually a gemstone thing.
You know, Jay-Z?
The north side of Old Jacksonville Road. That area is on that. You know where the, where the clinic is going with that? So it's a pediatric center or whatever. They spend like forty million dollars.
Who's a bitch about that? That's a good neighbor.
Yeah, you bitcher ass.
But you know, that is a question.
God is fishing to learn the people who are fishing. We should be cooking at the dogs.
You kidding me? It takes our guys.
The September twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the city council of the city of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the zoning agenda is docket number twenty twenty-two dash zero three six for the property located at eight fifty North Dirksen Parkway. Petitioner is Endurjit Singh as contract purchaser, present zoning classification B one, Highway Business Service District, section one five five point zero three three. Requested only relief of conditional permitted use pursuant to section one five five point zero three three C seven, conditional permitted use in the V one Highway Business Service District one five five point two hundred taverns and a variance of section one five five point two hundred A two taverns to allow a tavern within one hundred feet from the nearest lot on which there is a residence, residence church, school, park, community facility, or daycare. Regarding the history of this property, granted relief in docket two thousand nine dash zero three one to allow a CPU for the sale of packaged liquor and a variance of section one five five point two one zero to allow the sale of packaged liquor through a drive-up window on the condition that food prepared in a food service establishment as defined in section ninety-five point zero zero one is offered for sale on the property. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested CPU provided that, number one, only packaged liquor sales in accord with zoning case number two thousand nine dash zero three one are allowed and no tavern open pore cells are allowed in the drive-through window. And number two, the tavern is limited to the existing building footprint approval of the requested variance. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the motion for approval as recommended by both commissions.
Second.
Been moved in second to recommend approval as approved by both commissions. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. Zoning passes nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight for the property located at fourteen twenty-five South MacArthur Boulevard. Petitioner is Walthor Properties LLC, present zoning classification S two, community shopping and office district, section one five five point zero three one. Requested zone relief of conditional permitted use pursuant to section one five five point zero three one C four residences located on the first floor and section one five five point one eight two multifamily residences in certain commercial districts and variances of sections one five five point zero five six B, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow a four duplex on a lot containing three thousand five hundred eighty-eight square feet instead of the six thousand square feet required by code and one five five point zero nine one A required accessory off-street parking spaces residences to allow zero accessory off-street parking spaces on the lot instead of the two required by code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning passes ten voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. At this time, Chair will recognize Treasurer Buscher for presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of August had a beginning balance of sixty-two million twenty-seven thousand four hundred forty-four dollars. We took in total receipts of sixteen million four hundred fifty-four thousand thirty-one dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of August of twelve million nine hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of August of sixty-five million five hundred four thousand one hundred forty dollars. Mayor Langfelder, of that balance, your ARPA fund ending balance included in that was twenty-five million eight hundred ninety thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post said nay. Motion carries. We have a couple of presentations. First one is from Sinclair Broadcast Group, Emily Lynch. And Scott Doll's gonna give an intro. Thanks, Scott. Director Doll.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that and appreciate your time tonight. We promised to be brief, but with the first day of fall this week, we wanted to give you a recap of our summer digital marketing campaign. We also have a very busy fall convention and winter convention season as well. So we want to get ahead of that and provide you this information and the results of that summer digital marketing campaign. With me tonight, as the mayor said, Emily Lynch with Sinclair Broadcasting Group. So glad you're here. As you recall, we did an RFP earlier this year, and Sinclair Broadcast was the highest score in that. Just some of those details where we looked at target cities, which Emily will cover. We had a target demographic. Again, Emily will cover that. We had different channels, display, retargeting, Facebook, Instagram. Again, this is a digital summer marketing campaign, primarily domestic. We had minimal requirements, five hundred thousand over-the-top commercials, video, two hundred thousand impressions, display, five hundred thousand impressions, et cetera. We had a reporting system and we had all content was produced by the media outlet. So quite a bit wrapped up in this digital marketing campaign. And I'll turn it over to Emily at this time, and she'll give you the details.
Thank you. Feels like summer today, so a good day for a recap. So thank you so much for your partnership for this last summer campaign. We targeted areas of people that were family vacationers, adults thirty-five plus, road trippers, interest in Abraham Lincoln, interest in history. We targeted cities like Milwaukee, Madison, Wisconsin, Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Iowa, Chicago suburbs, Moline, Illinois, Indy, Paducah, and St. Louis in Kansas City, Missouri. In comparison to the twenty nineteen campaign, you had over a hundred thousand more OTT commercials. That's just what we call those non-skipable streaming commercials that you see when you're watching TV. You had over two hundred thousand more display and video impressions than twenty nineteen. And your average open rate of our emails that we sent out was over eighteen percent. And at Sinclair, we guarantee an eight percent open rate. So that did great. Your goal for the Facebook campaign this year was to generate more clicks to your posts and visits to the Visit Springfield page. This resulted in over twenty-six thousand more clicks to visit Springfield website and page for the summer in twenty nineteen. We can watch an example of the, what somebody that living in maybe Paducah has seen in their non-skipable streaming ad. And it exemplifies our town well and an interest for everybody. This is a fifteen-second ad that you might have seen if you were living in Moline on Facebook. So that commercial, as you can see, is geared towards more of the history buffs and focuses on the rich history that Springfield offers. This is an example of one of the email sends that somebody has seen. The best clicking image was that hero image at the top of the history comes alive and everything that that program has to offer. Thank you so much, and that was a recap of your summer twenty twenty-two. Any questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Scott. Yep, go ahead.
Real quick, and thank you, Emily, and thank you, Sinclair. And by the way, that resulted for us this year, the numbers are in through August. We had pre-pandemic levels this year in revenue and travel expenditures. Actually, we're running right now for the year-to-date a record-breaking average daily rate. And in August, we ran a hundred-nine-dollar average daily rate. We've never broken a hundred dollars up to that point. So we're also got a record-setting year-to-date average daily rate. Occupancy is just a couple of points down. So again, we've returned to pre-pandemic levels on all levels, and I think part of that is this digital marketing campaign. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, just a real quick question. Do you, and I know you have this, but is there a way we can get kind of an analysis of the, by zip code? In other words, see how successful the marketing is based on whether it's hotel rooms or the historic sites or what have you? What kind of data is available?
So, so we're utilizing Placer AI, the city purchased that, that data, that analytic data. We can do that for events. We can break it down by zip code and tell you where people are coming from. We've been doing that for events throughout the year so far, and it's been proven very, very valuable. I'm not for sure if, can you guys break it down by zip code?
Yeah, we can break it down so we can kind of match the two together and see what resulted.
That would be interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we can provide that.
Great. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Doll, do you plan on bringing back the Legends and Tourism thing? You know I was gonna ask.
We, I knew you were gonna ask this, and we do.
I think it's a good thing. I think it really spurs a friendly competition between people who host the events in our city, you know, as a past winner of it. I like it.
In twenty nineteen, we talked about bringing that program back in twenty twenty, and obviously we know what happened then. So yes, absolutely. That is on our radar, and I do, I agree. I think it's a great event, both locally and, and to recognize our event planners and really just our citizens as well. So absolutely.
All right. Look forward to it.
Alderman Redpath.
Director, good job on the presentation. I, I thought it was great. Do you have any numbers on the hotel occupancy rates?
We do, yeah. I can provide snapshots to the council if you want, but absolutely, yeah. We've got not only monthly, quarterly, and year-to-date as well. Currently, we're running fifty-three point four percent year-to-date in the city, and we're running ninety-six-dollar average daily rate, which again is a record-breaking rate. We've never ran a ninety-six-dollar rate.
And that's every, every hotel, or how do you break that down?
That's, so that's taking our three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five rooms we have in the city, and that's every available room every day. So, meaning that if we continue to run that fifty-three percent occupancy, we'll rent over eight hundred thousand room nights in the city in twenty twenty-two.
Obviously, that's an enormous jump from the twenty percent was projected from like last year. Was that correct?
That, that's absolutely correct, yeah. And we're running pre-pandemic levels at this point. So we're ahead of the curve.
Thank you.
And do we have the numbers for the Wyndham? I think that's where he's getting that.
We have-
How many room? What's the percentage?
Well, I didn't want to say that.
Well, no, we, we receive citywide, we receive citywide, so we can't break it down by-
Right.
-per property. So, you know, that's a combination of all of the properties. So there's properties that I think are running, you know, ninety-five percent. I think there's properties that may be running thirty percent.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brad Fletcher from the Illinois Finance Authority to talk to us about the PACE program. Thank you. And there are a couple of ordinances being impacted by this program, so we appreciate it.
Good evening, and thank you for having me, Mayor, City Clerk, Alderman, Alderwomen. My name is Brad Fletcher. I'm with the Illinois Finance Authority. I've been with the authority for a number of years. If you're not familiar with the authority, we're a state agency, but we're self-funded. So taking myself an example, if I don't make money, we don't pay payroll, our own bills, et cetera, et cetera. So we're motivated. The mayor asked me to stop by today for your consideration under your consent agenda is an ordinance to create a PACE area, somewhat analogous to a TIC district, if you will, as well as establish a PACE program on a pilot basis for two properties in particular. One is six oh seven East Adams. The other, as I understand, is one north Old State Plaza. So if we have enough time, I can step through our PowerPoint real very quickly, perhaps answer any questions you have, and I'll stick around as well during the agenda debate to follow through. So of course, CPACE. What is CPACE? It's a new economic development tool available here in Illinois since roughly two thousand nineteen after we cleaned the statute up. CPACE stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Financing. And under state law, municipalities can create these PACE areas at the request of owners and developers of commercial real estate so such owners can make energy-efficient improvements on their properties at a lower cost than would otherwise be available in conventional financing. Okay? Next slide, please. And the reason we're here today and discussing this today is because this, of course, serves a public purpose, and that's what the ordinance frames for the community at large. Energy projects must be permanently affixed to the property. There is a list here, a bullet point list of your typical examples of what we see day in and day out through cold phone calls. Electrical charging vehicles, stations are eligible. Energy efficiency improvements, roughly anything that would save utility costs will qualify with very limited exceptions. To the extent a property would like to install solar panels or renewable energy improvement, those type of improvements will qualify. And then the last two there, resiliency, that's microgrids, batteries, generators. That's more applicable to properties in a flood zone, if you will, around the Mississippi. You know, they have those concerns, whereas not so much here. And then water use improvements, of course, the last presenters talked about hotels. As you can imagine, hospitality industry is one of the largest users of this type of financial product. Water use, water conservation is a huge expense for them on a monthly basis. So to the extent they can install low-fill fixtures, those type of measures that, of course, saves them money, and that's why they're very interested in this type of product. Next slide, please. So as much as we dress it up, this is through and through a special assessment, something each of you are familiar with. What's special about this, and will always be special about this type of special assessment, this will always be voluntarily requested. This is not the city of Springfield imposing special assessments on properties, commercial or otherwise. These will always be financial transactions that are voluntarily requested. And today, for your consideration, there are two properties initially. So eligible properties that fall within the PACE area voluntarily enter into the contract, and then a bond issue funds that project. Under Illinois law, there are two types of entities that could issue those bonds. The city of Springfield can undertake that financing and then incur the related compliance, or the Illinois Finance Authority, my agency, can take that burden off of your plate. And that's why we're here today, and that's why we're motivated to see these projects come to a successful conclusion in funding. These are documented through an assessment contract, as you might imagine, again, voluntarily requested. The municipal assessment of contract will reflect the business terms and conditions of each particular financing. The lien runs with the property, so as a special assessment, it's tied to the property, not necessarily the business operating within those four walls. And that's really important. Energy efficiency improvements need a longer runway for the savings to materialize. And because you need a longer runway, banks, commercial banks, this really isn't their wheelhouse. Most commercial banks will go out seven years, ten years for their best clients. CPACE is often fifteen years or longer, and that's a lot of retained risk for lenders. So the special assessment allows this, I should say, the municipal assessment contract allows the special assessment to transfer from one property owner to the next over a period of time. They could also pay that off during a commercial real estate sale, a private market solution. But it's that seamless transfer of that special assessment that really gets the lenders motivated to fund these projects. And of course, it's also very motivating for the property owners to know that this is recorded against the property, not necessarily their balance sheet, per se. Next slide, please. So some of this I've already touched on, especially with respect to the difference between CPACE financing and traditional bank financing. But this is a low-cost alternative. This is a new product. This is why it's the first time many of us are hearing it today. But it's a successful product. This has been in the market for roughly ten years. The overall CPACE financing market is roughly about two billion dollars. Just to give you a little bit of contrast, the CMBS market on any given day is about a half a trillion. Okay? So this is still very much in the early stages, but the nice thing was in twenty nineteen, we were able to study all the other states, what they did well, what they did not do well, and develop the statute here with best market practices. And that's how we ended up here today. Next slide, please. So under the statute, again, state law, there are some sponsor requirements for any potential commercial property owners. Again, today, we're limiting this to two property owners who are requesting it initially. It's our hope, if everything goes well, we can come back and have a discussion for future commercial properties. But these are some of the underwriting requirements, just to run through these real quick. Any particular property that requests such financing could not have any delinquent taxes, any existing delinquent special assessments, water or sewer charges. The properties cannot be in default or in bankruptcy proceedings over the last two years, et cetera, et cetera. These are all controls at the state level to mitigate anyone getting ahead of themselves with respect to financing these improvements. On the next slide, we also have some lending considerations from a capital provider standpoint. Under state law, energy efficiency improvements, should anyone voluntarily request such financing, are capped at twenty-five percent lien to value, meaning no one can overextend themselves over the value of the property. And that's important. You'll find in most states, it's twenty-five to thirty percent. The General Assembly took a more conservative stance and made it twenty-five. But if you consider commercial mortgages, they roughly usually go to seventy-five, eighty percent lien to value. That roughly leaves you with a gap of twenty-five to thirty percent that you need to finance or utilize cash out of your own pocket. And that's really where CPACE comes into play. It allows property owners to finance these eligible improvements at a low cost over a longer period of time than they would otherwise find available in the traditional banking market. Furthermore, there is an energy audit that is required. That's the second bullet point on page seven, if we could go back. Sorry, thank you. Energy modeling is required, so the property owners have all the information in front of them before they commit to something that maybe they can't afford, which is very important. That's a control. And finally, mortgage holder consent is required. If there's any existing mortgages on an existing property, they will be at the table for every future financing, and that's important as well, to make sure that everything is up to speed. And then just real briefly, I know I've taken a lot of time today on the next slide. Again, I touched on this earlier, the legislative history. This bill was first introduced at the state capitol in twenty seventeen. It was somewhat dead on arrival. My agency was not an author to the original iteration of the statute. However, in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we made some amendments. In twenty nineteen, frankly, we rewrote the statute top to bottom. And since that time, we've been very effective at closing and funding these transactions across the state. And the reason that we've been good at it, next slide, if I may, is the authority has a lot of experience in the fixed income market. And what this financial product needs is market access more than anything else. Again, as a body politic and corporate created by the laws of the state, we've historically served as the primary conduit issuer of bonds and notes for projects undertaken by private sector borrowers. As I alluded to, the General Assembly made some amendments to the statute to include the authority and provide that market access. And at this point, we're strategically working with municipalities, cities, towns, and incorporated villages. Counties also have this opportunity to develop these programs. Our marketing preference to date has been municipal entities for a variety of reasons. And so we created our state support model. This is page ten of the PowerPoint. And this is really the key attributes of what we prefer to offer the market, and we know the market needs. Three big points here for us, our standardization. As you can imagine, there's twelve hundred and ninety-seven municipalities in the state of Illinois. If you are a capital provider from the west coast or the Sun Belt, the last thing you really want to do is negotiate legal and financing documents with twelve hundred and ninety-seven different cities. What they prefer is that their Big Mac tastes like a Big Mac no matter where they are in Illinois to bring it home. Efficiency, obviously, this is what I do day in and day out, so there is a bit of subject matter expertise, if I may say. We also have a very built-out staff that deals with bond issues for private actors day in and day out as well. That's important. And finally, affordable. I can say with full confidence that we are cheaper than almost all county existing programs. It's quite frankly a badge of honor of mine. And we prefer to market to municipalities because you're closest to land use and zoning is. And that's really where we find harmony in our public policy. And so the next slide is municipal opt-in. That's what we're doing today. We're not opting in the entire city of Springfield and its jurisdictional boundaries. Instead, we're going to have a program of two pilot projects. And again, if everything goes well, we'd love to have the opportunity to come back and discuss this again. But what the ordinance importantly does, that's under your consideration today, and we'll spend a minute on this, so it's clearly understood. It includes a finding that the financing or refinancing of energy projects is valid public purpose. Again, I, that was at the beginning of the slide. It approves a form of assessment contract that is attached to the ordinance in the program report. That's a standardized document for the corporation council's benefit. They don't have to review these time and time again. The only thing that will change for each deal is the schedules and exhibits. So the body of that contract, which is quite lengthy, is standardized, and that reduces your staff costs as well. And importantly, it creates the territory. As I've said a number of times, this is just for two pilot projects, the PACE area, who are voluntary requesting this at this time. And the program report has been provided, and I believe it's been uploaded into your system for your consideration. Okay. And then funding, this is where IFA comes into play. We are the financial conduit issuer of record, not the city of Springfield. Therefore, the city of Springfield does not incur any compliance or accounting obligations over the life of the loan, which can extend up to thirty years. It's Illinois Finance Authority paper, not the city of Springfield paper, so that administrative burden has been obviated. And our board, of course, meets under compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Each lender that we approve for our program is, can debate it publicly, as, as you are doing here today for your ordinance. And we have standard forms of financing documents, indentures, so on and so forth, that the market has reviewed, the market has approved, and we've closed deals with. So as I alluded to, you know, the benefit of using the authority, and thank you for having me, is that we do this day in and day out. Couple of case studies, just so we can see some actual results. On page thirteen, one of my first transactions, CPACE transactions, this was in the city of Beardstown, a few hours south of here. JBS has a global pork processing plant there. They wanted to install a solar voltaic farm. They rely CPACE, a special assessment, and as you can see, they were able to achieve significant energy utility bill savings. Next case study, a little farther north in suburban Cook County, that was Highland Park. That was a multifamily development. Again, they utilize CPACE to achieve a lower interest rate and longer-term financing. They reported to us that their water, water savings was five hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons a year, and that equated to only thirteen thousand dollars in savings. But if you look at the energy utility bill savings, that's sixty-two thousand a year. That's significant for a multifamily property, and that's why we do this. I have a couple FAQs that always pop up, the most important of which is what types of commercial properties qualify. This is state statutory language. Any privately-owned commercial, industrial, non-residential, agricultural, or multifamily, provided that it's five or more units, would qualify for this financing. Does that mean that every potential commercial property owner will come to terms with a lender? No, but by and large, the lenders are interested in these type of properties going forward. But by and large, the lenders are interested in these type of properties going forward. As far as billing and collecting, and this is important because this is a municipal program, albeit pilot, the lenders, in these circumstances, at the municipal assessments, bill and collect these themselves. So you are not imposing any burdens on either the Springfield treasure or the Sangamon County treasure, which I think is important as well. We're obviously not trying to increase their staff time. As far as default remedies, just as you expect with a conventional financing, foreclosure is the remedy for the lenders in a default scenario. So that's a brief overview of CPACE. I recognize that this is a new economic development tool. I'll be hanging around to answer any questions, or I'd be happy to do so now.
Thank you. Alderman Donla.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Fletcher, thank you for the presentation. It's always good to learn about new economic development programs, especially in downstate Illinois where there aren't that many tools available to communities like ours. Just to cut to the chase, this almost seems, I'll just say it very bluntly, too good to be true.
Yeah.
And it seems like, I mean, has a, the purpose of the financing mechanisms and the improvements for the private owners and even public institutions, what, is there a risk for the city?
No.
No risk for the city?
No, you are, so the property.
Help me in.
At the time of consummating the transaction, the assessment contract is the equivalent of a mortgage. The city of Springfield is completely indemnified by the property owner. And because you are not undertaking the financing a state agency is, that is recorded on our books and records, and therefore, we incur the related compliance. Contemporaneously with the execution of that assessment contract, Alderman, authorized officers that are detailed in the ordinance also execute what's called an assignment agreement. And that transfers that assessment contract as collateral to the authority within seconds. And therefore, the authority steps in and fulfills all the duties and obligations under that ordinance for the financing. And because of that, there is no risk or liability to the city of Springfield itself.
And can you help me? Just two other questions, then we'll move on. But does the prop, does the area that is designated the PACE area, does it have to be contiguous? In other words?
No.
Okay, it could be spread throughout the community.
Yes.
So really, what we need to do is have a one-pager that describes the types of programs that could be available and see if businesses slash institutions in our community need them. What is, is there a minimum dollar amount?
Statutorily, no. From a state agency standpoint, we have no minimums. Economically, it's been my experience, professional experience, projects that are under $1 million become tougher to pencil out, if you will. I will say, in CPACE's defense, obviously, not all financial products are for all projects, of course. Everyone is striving to get to those smaller deals because that's really where the volume is. That's where the lenders can make the most bang for their buck, because most projects are on the smaller side. At this point, it's obviously a lot easier to finance larger projects because they can subsume the fees. But it's been my experience that under $1 million makes it a little bit harder to pencil out. And frankly, if I may say, to be blunt myself, it's a little harder to get the capital providers interested. At the end of the day, if the capital providers are not at the table, there's not much I can do. I'm simply a conduit between the property owner and the lenders. If the lenders are not interested in a project, even if it does pencil out, there's, again, you know, I'm somewhat limited, being that I'm not a lender myself.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for this. This is a really exciting option for us. Just a quick question, and it may be too much in the weeds for now, and if so, we can talk about it later. But what do you do in a situation where it's difficult to get a pre-modification energy assessment? Like, I'm thinking, we have a number of buildings downtown. I've got one very particular one in my ward that have been empty, almost stripped of everything inside. So energy usage over the last couple of years has been negligible to nothing. How, can you, can you accommodate that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Oftentimes, in my professional capacity, I receive phone calls from real estate owners, developers who would like to undertake these types of improvements to save money or because they're interested in the green attributes that this espouses. We do a number of things. One, we give them the list and contact information of all the capital providers that my Board of Directors has approved, so they can work with them. The capital providers, the lenders in this market, do have their own technical in-house expertise to look at a project. And it's been my experience, and I mean this, most of the time when a developer calls and says, you know, I think I got a project here that will garner interest, it's about $1 million, I tell them quite from the outset, you probably have 1.5 or 2 million. The lenders are really good at this because this is how they make money. So they'll offer that type of technical assistance, for lack of a better word, just as part of their marketing efforts. We also are in early stages of collaborating with the University of Illinois Springfield, CDAC. It's an acronym, S-C-D-A-C, I can't recall what it stands for. But they're really good at this, too. They perform energy audits for prospective projects, and we look forward to fulfilling, I should say, building out their relationship.
So it's not, it's not an obstacle that there hasn't been energy usage in the building for a couple of years?
Yeah, I would, I think the bigger obstacle there is, is what would that particular commercial real estate owner like to actually build? Right? What is their intent? And once that intent is known, then the lenders will say, you know, we think we can save you some money with these elevator controls. We think if you use these, this type of roof tile, this will save some money. And it's usually a bit of a discussion, not so much a negotiation.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Conley just asked the first part of my question, and you just brought up something. This presentation has grew my appetite. I represent the downtown, and we have a lot of vacant buildings. So how do we determine what's the limit on the projects that you will do?
When you mean limit?
How many projects can go at one time? Is there a certain cap per year?
No, and no, right? So this is, for all intents and purposes, but for the public mechanics that are under discussion today, the special assessment, the execution and delivery of the assessment contract, this is conventional financing. This is a private actor working with a private actor. The IFA, the state agency, is a conduit in between. And to avail the financing to those attributes, we simply need a little interplay with municipal government. There's no statutory cap on the number of projects. There's no statutory cap on how much could be financed. To provide market context, the largest CPACE transaction in the country, to the best of my knowledge, was $110 million in California. I believe that closed last year, it was for a hospital. On the smaller side, we already talked about, usually those are about $1 million to get the lenders interested. There's nothing saying that they couldn't go lower. It just needs to be significant interest. Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As far as how many we could do at one time, you know, there's only so many hours in a day. But these are typically institutional investors, so they're quite methodical. Usually, from the time I get a first phone call to the time we close, depending on how long this part takes, because this is really the first part, this is the engine on the train, it's usually six to eight weeks. At any given time, I'm working on four or five transactions a month is probably the best answer I could give.
Yes, and you brought up a concern about the elevators we have, and sorry to, let me correct myself. I share with Alderman Gregory, but I represent a large portion that has those vacant buildings. And we have a lot of those buildings who the elevators are just really, really, they have been dilapidated for years now.
Right, right.
And so need a lot of help in that area. So I will be contacting you along with asking probably for a meeting with the mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah, on the projects less than $1 million, say, we'll stay on the topic of downtown, there's numerous buildings. Is there a way to, for a developer, to lump several buildings together to get over that threshold? Or can you have an umbrella organization that would have multiple owners underneath that, where you could do five buildings possibly, or more than that?
Yeah, to answer your question, if a lender got comfortable lending for all five properties, it would be the lender's discretion, I probably, is probably the best word, to cross-collateralize and secure that financing with all five properties at once. A good term for that would be a pooled financing. We have those mechanics in place. To date, no one has requested it, but we have that all ready to go off the shelf.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Very helpful. Appreciate it. Next, we do have another one on consent that's here to give a brief update, is GR Consulting, Larry Luster and Art Turner and others. Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us. Sorry, sorry. First of all, thank you, council folks, for allowing us to be here today. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing us to present. I'm gonna have Art pass out a few handouts just to kind of outline what we're gonna be discussing. So I'll go ahead and get started. First, again, thank you all for considering us to represent you before the state of Illinois. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent the city that most of our team grew up in. And we have a new transplant here, Art Turner, who's been here for a number of years also. And he's just as honored as I am to represent this great city, the capital city. I also want to introduce Sarah Jimenez and Brian Wojcicki. They've been, you know, really important to our team as far as gathering information. They have a wealth of knowledge around the city, and Sarah's messaging's really helped us get the message across to legislators in a way that they can understand and comprehend it because of her previous experience. So I just want to make sure that I highlight them as part of our team. So I'll go ahead and kind of dive into it. You know, we're here to have a discussion about, you know, bringing us back on board. And I think over the course of the last year, you know, we've done a lot of good things. You know, when we look at CWLP and the carbon capture program, the carbon capture system that we have, that's the, one of the only ones in the world, I believe, maybe one of two. We were able to bring in not only the reappropriation, but also a new appropriation for an additional $6 million to make sure that program can further develop and be the model for the rest of the world. We also worked with the, through the Electronic Vehicle Illinois Act. You know, Springfield's really unique, having its own electric company, electric cooperative. I don't know how to classify it, but that's just set here for Springfield. So it positions us to move faster and be more prepared for new developments like the electric vehicles that are being advanced throughout the country. So we position Springfield to really take advantage of some of those programs. I know there's a recent, a recent RFP that went out, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the further developments that CWLP and the city of Springfield are able to do. One thing that's not on here is when we talk about law enforcement cameras and making sure that we can track folks who are trafficked throughout the state, throughout the city, I'll make sure that we have eyes on some of those folks who may, who we want to make sure that we watch and we're capturing, so we can have a way to make sure we identify those people and can rescue people. If there's some drug trafficking, things like that, make sure that, you know, we're positioned to also have eyes on that. So we were able to position the city of Springfield and Sangamon County, for that matter, to participate in that program. Another, the reappropriation for the Armory, $121 million reappropriation, the $15 reappropriation that finally got signed off on by the Board of Trustees on July 24th for the purchase of the property, I believe that's along, is that Adam Street or is it a street over? I can't remember.
Or in Washington.
Washington. So, yeah, so we, you know, we work with the University of Illinois to kind of facilitate that process, move along a little bit faster, so you all can start seeing some results immediately. On the community support and investment, the $3 million investment for community development and violence prevention, and over $2.1 million in distribution from the American Rescue Plan Act to city nonprofits and schools and health facilities. You know, we work with, under the leadership of Senator Turner and Representative Shear, we're able to position Springfield to get some additional dollars to address violence prevention and community development. $250,000 for the Mid Illinois Medical District, and then $150 million for the Downtown and Medical District Master Plan through the RISE grant. It's a grant through, I believe, DCO, is that correct? Yeah, grant through DCO that, you know, will provide Springfield with some additional dollars so we can further grow and develop. The next thing I want to point out was one of the initial projects that we worked on, which was the Ennis Park TIF and the Madison Park Place TIF. We were able to work with the mayor, and again, under the leadership of Senator Turner and Representative Shear, we're able to help, you know, foster a solution to ensure that everybody was satisfied in what we were trying to achieve, which was further community development. Lastly, you know, some items that we're gonna continue to work on are gaming. I know there's an appetite to bring a casino to Springfield, so still gathering information and working with legislative leaders around that concept. Pension reform, something that we're working on, you know, with the IML and other interested cities who are interested in finding new ways to manage their pension debt. An additional fund, you know, additional funding requests. We're still working with, you know, trying to find a way with the state to figure out how we're gonna manage the North Mansion Block and bring that entertainment space and make it live for folks. Still working on that and broadband expansion, something that was identified, bringing more broadband access, as we saw with the pandemic and the access to the internet, and we saw the disparity. We recognize that we need to figure out a solution for that, so working with the state so we can bring more funding in to make sure they have access to that high-speed internet. Oh, and as I mentioned on the back page, it's a broader list of all the appropriations that the city of Springfield received. There's some, I believe there's a star by the ones that were new appropriations. So we were able, we were able to make good on our investment.
Great. Thank you very much. Alderman Repath.
Larry, thank you for your presentation. Very pleased with the results that you guys brought to us in the past year, and I look forward to working with you again in the future. We obviously are gonna look at the future right now because one of the biggest problems we're gonna see is pension reform. And as you know, we asked you to look into that, and that has to, we need to turn the flames up on that because we need help, and as every other municipality does in the state. But that's always been an ongoing problem from us, and it's building every day. So we really want you to work on that. So that's an issue that we have to have done.
Good. Absolutely. Thank you. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Larry, Mr. Turner, and I'm gonna mess your last name up, but how are you guys doing? Miss Sarah and Mr. Brian. Thank you for your presentation. You guys did a good job. Last week, when we was talking about this, I just wanted to revisit a few things. I know you have been working on teen empowerment zone things, and also on the North Mansion, you know, white block. I just want to stress, you know, that, you know, we didn't get that there. And, you know, I don't know what the exact feelings are, but it is a priority to us in our city, as well as our teen empowerment zone, for multiple reasons. We're seeing increased, you know, violence among youth. Chief just presented a presentation, you know, we're up to about 17 youth that's, you know, been caught with guns and things up. So it's, you know, a big deal. It's a big thing. I know Alderman Purchase just had some things going on in her ward. So, you know, this is a total citywide thing that we want to address. And, you know, I just ask that we continue to work on that so we can really sink this in. And I'm willing to meet with Senator Turner, Shear, and all of our representatives that represent this area to really stress the importance to that. So I appreciate your work, Alderman.
Thank you. Alderman Donla.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to say, you know, this, the ordinance to extend the contract is obviously on the consent agenda. You didn't have to come this evening. A lot of people that, when things are on the consent agenda, don't come. But I just appreciate you being here and the entire team being here and the work you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming, too. But last week, we was told you was coming with a report, so I was expecting you. So I'm glad that you're here. And I want to thank your team for the work on Pillsbury, you know. Thank you for, you know, I know it wasn't easy extending that TIF. You know, the SHA TIF has been extended to help the citizens living around Springfield. And I would request and ask that you keep your eyes and ears open for any type of funding and help on Pillsbury Plant itself. As you know, the environmental study is over, and we got good news out of it. Wasn't as bad as we thought, but it's still bad and it still has to come down. So I'm just requesting of you, while you're down there, if you hear anything that this may be a fit for, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Then, one other item is, it's been in the news recently, is the Safety Act. And I don't know if you can share any insights. You know, it's my understanding, it's states attorneys have filed lawsuits. We received a letter from a political action group asking us to weigh in on rescinding it, you know, in the middle of an embroiled lawsuit. So, and I think there's provincial amendments coming forward, but do you know, or can you provide any insights with regards to that?[1750.76]
So there's been a lot of discussion about them bringing this back up for discussion during veto session and possibly lame duck session if there is one. So my suggestion would be to be mindful and to pay attention to what's going on. Get as much information as you can and read as much as you can about the act and both the pros and the cons, depending on where you're at on the spectrum. Just get a better understanding of it and kind of, I would suggest individually making those decisions rather than as a collective because we don't know whether or not, I don't know how you all feel about the act specifically, but that would probably be for an individual discussion.
If I may, I just, yeah, so there's been a lot of misinformation out on the Safety Act. And the legislators, our local legislators have worked to provide some clarification around the issue. The governor has already stated that they'd like to and they're working on currently coming back with a trailer piece of legislation to address some of the concerns in the Safety Act. And it's a lot around implementation. There's just no real clarity around that. And all parties and both sides are able to agree at that point. So I believe that that will be one of the top priorities for the veto session in November or scheduled early December. And then we're going to have to work really fast to bring our local clerks and courts and counties up to speed on the adjustments that I anticipate to be made behind it. We'll keep you guys, the entire council, updated on the developments as they pertain to the Safety Act, something that's very important. So thank you for asking.
Great. Alderman Gregory.
Just one final note that I had on my page. I see here that continue advocacy to add, you know, Springfield to the list of cities to qualify for the casino. And I understand that we had a resolution for this before that failed and, you know, I had some conversations with different legislators in passing and, you know, that was one of the things why we didn't get considered. So, you know, I would ask, you know, that we draft that resolution. You know, we have a lot of gaming spots and if that's going to help us move, you know, to be on that list, I think to have all our gaming and all our gambling in one place, bringing jobs and revenue to the city would be a good thing. We just approved one. You know, we hear constant talks about, you know, more and more added and, you know, whether we're going to cap it or not. And I think this is a great time to be on that list to fight for a casino in the city because people like to gamble. It is what it is. I don't gamble anymore, but, you know, we should do what people like to do. So thank you. That's my last point.
Alderman, the gaming discussion is a timely discussion right now. There have been discussions about for next session, an expansion in gaming and iGaming. So iGaming along with other casino locations or whatnot. But that would put us at a very high seat count, it is, for gambling positions in the state. So the chairman for the gaming, well, the chairman for the executive committee who handles all of the gaming on the state side, Representative Bob Rita, has at this point said that, look, we're kind of holding off on any full expansion talks, but we will keep Springfield included in those discussions and keep you updated on how that's going with the game.
I appreciate you.
Any other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 6, 2022 regular city council meeting. Approve the minutes. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the records of the city council meeting.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the city council meeting.
So move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion, Alderwoman, dissent so.
Yes, I need to be present on 392, please, clerk.
Noted.
Thank you.
Alderman McMenon.
Mr. Mayor, there's an ordinance on the consent agenda, 2022-384, has to do with a letter of intent regarding jurisdictional transfer of the old portion of MacArthur from Wabash up to South Grand. And Alderwoman, dissent so, and also Alderwoman Conley, we've talked about this. And we don't know yet what alternative rebuild will be chosen. Alderwoman, dissent so, and I both serve on what's called the Community Advisory Group for the rebuild of Old MacArthur, and we haven't met in 11 months. And there is still three alternatives for the rebuild of Old MacArthur, having to do which properties get acquired, which buildings get demolished, the width of the lanes and that kind of thing. So we think it may be better just to hold off on this until we know exactly what the rebuild will look like precisely. So that's our recommendation. So if we can get approval for that, I'll make a motion to hold this ordinance until we know more about the exact iDOT plans for the rebuild of Old MacArthur.
Second.
Been moved in second to hold a discussion. I'd ask Nate Bottom come up and make sure there's not any issues or what his recommendation is on that.
I'll go ahead and have a conversation with iDOT in regards to that. I know that they were wanting to go ahead and get that done and see the commitment from the city, but we can go ahead and have that conversation with them and I'll follow back up with everybody.
Thank you.
So just send it back to committee.
Yes.
Been moved in second to send, what was that ordinance number again?
384.
Send it back to committee. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda, yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Well, I'm a yes, it ain't working.
And the consent agenda passes nine voting yes, none voting no.
Mayor?
Yes. Alderman Hanauer.
If I may, I'd like to move that we bring 2022-397 to the front of the agenda to, got a lot of people out here that are interested in that.
Okay.
Second, the motion.
First, we'll do agenda number 2022-256, remains table during committee. There's no action on that, I take it. So there's a motion to pull 2022-397 to the front of the agenda. Then second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda is 2022-397, a resolution authorizing an advisory question of public policy for submission on the ballot of the consolidated election to be held on April 4th, 2023 regarding the dissolving of the portion of all townships located in the city of Springfield. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-397 on final passage.
So move. Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion, before we start discussing, I just want to, we do have several people signed up to speak, so I just want to cover some commonly asked questions that were shared with the council earlier and it pertains to this particular ordinance. First one is, why is the resolution ordinance being presented again? Previously, we wanted to add the item to the November ballot, but the urging of the city council members, it was preferred to have it on the city's April ballot. Question two was, what townships will be affected? Any township parcels within the corporate limits of the city of Springfield? And this would include, there was a list that we can't go over, but it was Woodside, Kern, Gardner, Springfield, I think Rochester, and I might be missing one or a couple others. But those are the main ones, I believe. Chatham had one, Ball, and Clear Lake and Cotton Hill. And it says, there's a loophole in the state statute that allows townships to retain municipally annexed properties instead of having them go to the previously, go to the municipality's previous conterminous township of capital. Through different administrations, properties have been annexed but retained by the original township. And to date, there's 1,390 parcels. What's the purpose of the referendum? The purpose that there are annexed property owners paying taxes to townships and not receiving the services. The city provides the road services, for example, annexed properties around the lake. Upon the public passing the referendum, we will request the state legislature to close the loophole and dissolve the parcels from township jurisdictions so we can provide property tax relief to the affected residents. Question four, and then there's one other. What about the referendum that was passed to dissolve Capital Township? Previously, a referendum was passed a year or two ago, 74% to 26% to dissolve Capital Township with the Sangamon County. However, the only provision in state statute for a conterminous township to be merged is with the municipality, which is conterminous of being Capital Township, was established as a co-terminous township with the city of Springfield. The projected taxpayer savings at that time was estimated to be $685,000. And then the final question, number five, was what will the referendum cost the city of Springfield? Would cost us zero. The referendum gives our residents a voice to express their opinion on township jurisdiction and property tax relief. So with that, I don't know if the city council members have any questions or should we just go to the audience? Alderman Williams.
Yes, you know, on this issue, for clarity of the Ward 3 residents that are listening, so what we're doing here tonight is voting to ask a question to the citizens, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that we're not approving to put anything into anything right now. We're asking the citizens a question and upon the results, then further action will be taken, like sent it on to the state legislator or whatever else is required. So thank you. I just wanted to make this statement.
Any other questions or comments from the council? The first person signed to speak is Carol Sutton. If you'd give your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it. And if the comments could be directed to the chair, that would be great.
Everybody tells you you can get over a knee replacement in four months, I was kidding you. Trust me. Mayor Langfeller, council members, officials elected and appointed. It's deja vu all over again. I was here three months ago, actually three months to the day ago, talking to you about the same thing. I still don't understand how many properties are involved here. And I've talked to a lot of people in the last week or so, and the more people I talk to, the less I seem to know about what's being proposed. So it's, you know, it's a good thing we're going to vote tonight because then I can maybe understand it. This, it's just, it's not the way to do it. It really isn't the way to do it. You want people to come into the city, forcing them in is not the way to do it. I don't believe that's the way that we do things in a free country. I hope it's not the way we do things in this country. I know there are others lined up behind me to speak and I will keep my remarks mercifully short. Thank you.
Carol? Thank you. Corporalish Council can weigh in, but these are parcels that were already annexed into the city. These have nothing to do with people outside the city limits right now. And so Corporalish Council, if you'd like to go over that portion of the referendum, that'd probably be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, just very briefly, you may recall, the resolution is for to put an advisory question on the ballot. It's not a binding result regardless of the outcome of a vote. It is to seek advice on a public question. You may recall that the way the annexation process works is that when this city, any municipality, but in this specific case with the city of Springfield, when areas are annexed, then in that case, ordinarily, the parcels would become part of our co-terminous township, which is Capital. However, there is a process under the law that allows the existing township to vote within the township to retain those places or those parcels in the township regardless of the annexation. So the effect of that is to, the annexation to the city remains in place or intact, but rather than parcels going to, for example, the co-terminous township like Capital, they are retained within the specific township that they were originally. So the issue becomes one that the entire township votes on it. It's not limited to voting to people that are, have already been annexed, in other words, the affected parties. So there's been, all the parcels around the lake have been annexed in by the city of Springfield. And then there's some out off of Rafferty Road, I believe, that Kern Gardner, they took a vote and they retained those parcels within the township, even though those residents or those parcels are now within the city of Springfield. What typically happens is, that's the loophole we're trying to close with the state legislature. So once a parcel's annexed into the city, the individual would no longer have to have that payment to the township. It would be dissolved. And that's what we're talking about.
So we're talking more than 50 townships or 50 parcels than 500 parcels?
Right. Well, actually, the ones, we did take a look at how many parcels have been annexed in over the years that have been retained by the townships, and it does equal right now 1,390 parcels. So around the lake.
1,390?
Right. Is that correct, Corporalish Council? Yeah, Public Works was able to, this was one of the questions one of the council members had. So Public Works did put together the list that we had circulated. There are a total of, and again, this is not something that's recent. It's gone on for a long time. I think when Mayor Davenant had, for example, annexed 80 or 90 parcels, I think in that instance, Woodside retained those parcels. So this has been a long process. It's not something that just started. It's been more historical. And in this case, Public Works is reporting that of the townships mentioned by the mayor that there are 1,390 parcels that are in the city that were annexed, but ended up staying with the prior township, not proceeding to be the normal process of with Capital Township. In the case specifically with Woodside, it, Public Works reports 685 parcels that were annexed were retained by Woodside that should have gone in a normal process to Capital.
So would the residents occupying those parcels be able to vote in this advisory referendum?
Yes. Correct. It, all city, it would be limited to city residents.
Just the city, right?
Yes. It's an advisory question that would go on a city, you know, city ballot, like other advisory questions that have happened in other instances.
That was 680 from Woodside?
It indicates, and again, I'm just reading off the information, Public Works indicated that there were 685 parcels that had been annexed to the city. You know, these would be individual houses, for example, parcels, individual parcels, where through the statutory process, there was a referendum to keep them in Woodside, not allowing them to go, for example, to Capital Township.
So almost half of the parcels are in Woodside Township?
Of the 1,390, they're reporting 685 of those out of the 1,390 relate to Woodside. And then the rest are, I think the next larger one is Springfield Township has 468, if I'm reading this correctly. And I think Gardner Township has 150 parcels.
No wonder the phone calls have been as heavy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol? Next is Nick Whitfield.
Yeah, I just want to address the council that I've lived in Lake Town for 22 years and I'm happy with what Woodside Township provides to us. They keep the roads good, branches get picked up, and I just don't think, I, it just bothers me that Springfield is trying to do this. I want it just left alone. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think any of the parcels are within Lake Town.
Nope.
You know, Corporalish Council?
Yeah, I don't. This only affects parcels that are inside the city, not, you know, parcels that are not in the city. This is limited to just those that are inside the city.
And the reason it's important, when they go to Capital Township, then they don't pay other taxes, so say with it. So it's usually a wash when we annex in, but if they're retained by the current township that they were in or the previous one, then they're seeing a spike up in their property tax typically. Next is Kenneth. Oh, Alderman McMenon.
Yeah, just to repeat that, Mr. Whitfield, if you're in Lake Town, you're outside the city limits at this present time, so this does not affect you. This only affects parcels that are currently within the city limits.
Lake Town is in Woodside.
It's in Woodside, but it's not within the city boundaries of the city of Springfield.
It's the corporate city limits. The easiest way to understand it, do you vote in the city election? And if you do, then you're impacted. If you don't, then you're not impacted. Next is Kenneth Elmore.
My name is Ken Elmore, and I appreciate you allowing me to have the time to speak before you folks tonight concerning this issue. I had a couple questions, I have a lot more concerns, but I'm not gonna even try to address those tonight, because I think I need to be briefed towards other people that's gonna need to speak, or wanna speak. But the first thing I would like to do is present to this board, a little brief history of Woodside Township, I think it's important that that's being taken into consideration. I was really shocked when I found this out, but does anybody know how long Woodside Township has been in existence? Since 1860. 1860 was the year of formulative Woodside Township, and they've existed ever since. Woodside Township is a known entity that's been around for a very, very, very long time, and I just thought you folks should be aware of that, going into this and considering a Another thing that I wanted to speak out about was, I live in Lake Town, I've lived in Lake Town for 33 years, so I'm a longtime resident, I'm also president of Lake Town Association, so I kinda got two hats in the ring here. The first thing I would like to discuss and let you folks know is, how much the residents out there in Lake Town absolutely, absolutely love the services that we receive, and how well we're taken care of by Woodside Township. I don't think, in all the time I've been president of the association, I've ever had one person in that entire neighborhood raise a concern or complain about how the services are that's being provided, that's a rarity. But the reason why that is, is because we have a very rare circumstance. Jim Edwards, who's the president of the area, Woodside Township, he lives in Lake Town. Jim Edwards loves Lake Town, he loves Woodside Township, and he loves every resident who lives in it. This guy works 24/7 if he needs to, to do whatever needs to be done, provide whatever service that someone needs. Now, the way it generally works, and it's really great for me as a president of the associa, of association, is if somebody from Lake Town calls me personally, tell me what their problem is or concern, I can simply pick up my phone, call Jim, or call someone else, and get that problem resolved in 15 minutes. That's not an unusual consequence. And as a result, the service that these people get from Woodside Township is absolutely, absolutely incredible. My concern and their concern is that this resolution that you want to put forward on April 4 may in some way jeopardize that, and they absolutely do not want to lose, lose the credible services they receive from these areas. We also have, you know, Brad Miller, who's the, on the board for Woodside Township, he's the road commissioner, he carries about nine hands. Anytime I need something done, I usually call him before I even call Jim, because he orchestrates anything and everything that needs to be done, and then Jim puts his input in, and they get back with me and they said, this is how we're gonna do it, it's gonna be solved, taken care of. So, that is something that the people and the residents of, of not only Lake Town, but Woodside Township as a whole appreciate, and I'm sure that they are not going to want to give it up. So, to do anything concerning Woodside, I think would be a very, very big mistake. I think you guys need to really consider what's involved here. One of the things that's very important, and I know you guys are homeowners, so the same thing would apply to you, that would apply to us, would apply to anyone in, in Woodside Township. The services that you receive in, in the area which you purchased your home has a monetary value, and depending on the level of service that's provided to you, will make the difference whether you're going to stay in that area long-term or leave. I can tell you that if you went, and you went out to the Lake Town area, and you went and started knocking on doors and asking people, well, how long have you lived in Woodside Township? How long have you lived in Woodside Township? I will guarantee you, the vast majority of these people are gonna tell you, I've been here 30 years, been here 33 years, here been 35 years. And the reason why that is, is because the incredible service that Woodside Township provides to every resident in Woodside Township cements a bond, and these people know that if they go anywhere else, they're gonna lose this service, and they don't want to, and you wouldn't want to either. So, that's something I'm asking all of you to consider before you put this to a vote tonight, what's at stake. Another thing that I want to address concerning Woodside Township. We're past five minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if you could wrap it up, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up as soon as I can, won't be long.
I'll allow it, since he's speaking for the, a group, right?
Yes, and one, one thing else I would like to mention is, the one thing that Woodside Township does exceptionally well, is they show great stewardship over the finances that they receive. They're not understaffed, they're not overstaffed, they're efficient, they handle their finances very well, and the money that goes into Woodside Township, those dollars stay in Woodside Township. Those dollars are spent to provide services for the people who live in that area. I'm sure these people are not gonna want to be concerned with losing that. And one last thing I want to mention is, when I found out about this initiative, the way it was proposed to me, that, that I heard, was that the City of Springfield was considering consolidation of Woodside Township with the City of Springfield. Now, they use the term consolidation, this is not consolidation. I actually pulled the bill today and looked at the language that, for what you guys are gonna vote on tonight, and this is what it says, and I'm only gonna be, read part of it, because there's lots of different parts to it. Section 28-5 of Illinois Election Code, DILCS 528-5, provides for certification of advising question of public policy, and whereas, section 129-5 of the Illinois Township Code provides for discontinuance and abolishment of a township, and that the transfer of all rights, powers, duties, assets, property, liabilities, obligations, responsibility of the township to the municipality, and cease and dissolve all township, road, district, and all authority transferred to the municipality. There's also a section in there that deals with property taxes, which basically says the same thing. If, if you guys vote for this, this is what you're voting for, you're not voting for consolidation. When people see the term consolidation, and the way it's being presented to them, they're getting the idea that this vote, if it's approved to be put on the ballot on the 4th of, of April, that consolidation would mean somehow Woodside Township's gonna still exist, and they're gonna be in partnership and be with the Springfield City, and that they'll consolidate together, and they'll be working for a common goal, which would be to provide services these people want, and low property taxes. That's not what the language of this, that you guys are gonna vote on tonight says.
Yeah, actually, what it is, Mr. Elmore, I appreciate that, two items, one is Lake Town with annexations, and that's what we're talking about. If, if you're already in the City of Springfield, corporate limits, you've already been annexed in, that's what this will address, or future annexations.
Not all Woodside.
But on the Lake Town, with Lake Town, it is a large enough area that it has to be voted on by the residents of Lake Town, isn't that correct, Council?
Correct. Now, this has no impact on Lake Town or really on Woodside, it doesn't do away with Woodside Township at all, it just keeps them from taxing people in the city.
Well, you're gonna need to address, you're gonna need, in due respect, you need to address the language.
So, here's the, here's how the wording is, sir, it's real, real quick.
Need to address the language, the way this is being presented.
You want to read the question, Corporalish Council, so there's clarity?
And if you're gonna put this up for a vote on April 4.
We appreciate it, okay?
This needs to have the language.
I understand what you're saying, you like Woodside Township, you want to retain those services, as long as you live in Lake Town, you'll be able to retain that, unless the residents of Lake Town vote to consolidate with the City of Springfield, so you're safe.
But you're talking about, you're talking about all the townships, not just Lake Town.
We're talking about the parcels within the City of Springfield, because each one of these council members represent citizens within the corporate limits of the City of Springfield. So, that's what we're trying to address, are those residents that are paying township taxes, even though we provide all the services related to that?
Well, there's 1,090 households in Lake Town, okay?
Yeah, again, that's the reason why we cannot, we won't annex it in, unless there's a desire from Lake Town, because it takes the plurality of Lake Town residents to vote to be annexed into the city.
I'm not telling you you can't do it, all I'm saying is...
Yeah, I know, so you made your point, and I appreciate it.
If you're gonna do this moving forward, you need to make sure that the language and the way you're gonna be presenting this...
Yeah, he'll read it here, once they wrap up here.
Is consistent with the language of the bill, and it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate your time.
You too. So, Corporalish Council, if you want to read the question as it would appear on the ballot, please.
Okay, just, just very briefly, it is on the second page of the resolution, this is a resolution, not an ordinance, it is to, the city, like any public body, may place an advisory question, public policy question on the ballot, for persons to express an opinion on. And the process for presenting it, or establishing it for on the ballot as a public question, is a resolution. And the question, if it is adopted, that would be placed on the ballot, which is specified in part by the statute, you can only ask certain types of questions, and they have to take a certain form. So, the question states, shall the portion of all townships which are located within the boundaries of the City of Springfield be dissolved, and the taxes and duties thereof be consolidated with the City of Springfield to provide property tax relief and reduce the number of taxing districts? This is a policy question, it's, it's not binding, it's for then the legislature to determine how it might be implemented, just meaning, I'm sorry, state legislature.
Very good. Next is Dan Smith and Cap O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to make sure that you all know, I did not yield any of my time to Mr. Elmore. A little attempt at humor here, so, anyway, I'm here, my name is Dwight O'Keefe, I am a lawyer with Brownhean Stevens here in Springfield, and I'm here representing Gardner Township. Gardner, as many of you know, is immediately adjacent to the city on the west, and shares a jigsaw puzzle-like border with the city. Gardner's issue, quite frankly, is the slow absorption of it by the city and by law Capitol Township. This ordinance will not solve that issue. There are two myths here. One is that it will reduce redundancy, there is no redundancy. The city grows, it absorbs the township, the township stops taking care of the roads, and the city takes over. Gardner runs its general assistance program, Gardner assesses its property, Gardner runs a recycling program, and so on and so forth. Second, that this will somehow save tax dollars. I live in the city. Last year, according to my tax bill, I paid $34.74 to the city, to the taxing body for Capitol Township, and that's a $21.59 reduction from the year before, and I know my corporate tax went down a dollar, and I'll give you all credit for that, but that is 4 tenths of 1% of my real estate bill. It just illustrates to me, and hopefully to you, the small amount of, small percentage of tax burden that townships represent. If the object, objective here is to, as stated in the ordinance, use the money from the dissolution of the township for property tax relief, that dog won't hunt. I fully realize the ordinance proposes an advisory referendum, which is not binding on all involved. Gardner stands willing to sit down with the city and work out, in good faith, the solution of the issues presented, or it's ought to be presented here, but I would ask each of you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Gary Budd.
Yeah, just, in response to some of the information that's been put out here, we learned prior to this meeting tonight, that there are no township roads within the corporate limits of the City of Springfield, there are no township roads within the corporate limits of the City of Springfield. So, to the extent these 1,390 parcel owners are paying a, a road tax to the, to the township, they're paying for something that, for which they do not receive any benefit within the jurisdiction of the City of Springfield, so that's, this has to be, I think that was very helpful information we got from our Public Works Department today, Mr. Mayor.
And to that point, I know Gardner Township, and I'll, I'll, Mr. O'Keefe, come back up if he wishes, but I know there's individuals that called our office, that they pay a road and bridge tax, which is, you know, this particular person pays about $470 a year, and then the Gardner Township tax is about $135. And again, as Oliver McMenon said, we, we've taken over those roads and maintained those. So, Gary? Sorry.
Well, my name's Gary Budd, and, and some of you know me in this, but let me explain a couple things to you. I've been around Springfield my life, since 19, my dad and mom moved here in 1960, been a Northlander my whole life, raised at 15th and Convers, Lakeview Ballpark, have lived on the North End my whole life since then, lived in Springfield Township for about right at close to 40 years, probably a little over. You guys can't take care of what you got. I mean, it's a proven fact, and, and you, you put an ad in the paper Sunday that you want to put out bids to help you plow snow. Joe, I disagree with you, because I think there's a couple roads in Springfield Township that you may, that we, we do take care of. I don't have them in front of me tonight, I wasn't ready for that. But we have what the city doesn't have, and that is, we have general assistance in Springfield Township. We have our own assessment, the City of Springfield doesn't, and our assessment usually is a little cheaper than living in the city, we don't pay this much in property taxes. I personally feel that what the people get from the Springfield Township, and I can't speak for the others, you get more for your money than you think you do for your buck, you get a lot more. We have a dumpster program that's open during the week and the first Saturday of the month, that those people take and get advantage of, and they do take advantage of. We also have a Christmas, a food basket that we give out, out in December, which we do get people in that areas that you're talking about, that come in December that will get this. There's services here that you guys don't give, that you get in these townships. Look, we do our job, we do represent those people, and they do call us and ask for help. I'm asking for no vote, because you're going to take, if it's way the Corporalish Council said, and I'm gonna quit real quick, you're going to take almost 20% of Springfield Township. We have approximately 20... We have approximately twenty-seven-hundred households. If you takes over six hundred, we're down to around two thousand. That's a huge cut, guys, huge cut in Springfield Township. We try to do our best and live within the means that we have, and trust me, we don't get sales tax, we don't get none of that. We live off of what we, replacement tax and property tax. And I'm proud to say, we do a good job. That's all I got, guys.
Mr. Mayor. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gregory?
Uh, thank you. I, I, I met with you yesterday, I do believe.
Yes.
And, you know, and I agreed to listen to everybody, and, and, and I think the, the main thing is, is that we already have annexed these properties in, so they're really Springfield properties. However, these townships have found a loophole, and they're double taxing the citizens. That's not right, and we at least should be able to put it on the ballot for those, for the, for our citizens to give their opinion on whether that's right or not.
Okay. Real quick here on that, Sean, my question to you is, does each township get a right to put this advisory on a township ballot for the people to have the right to vote against this too? And if that's the case, I was at State Board of Elections yesterday, have a panther's about this thick from them, and we gotta go through a loophole to get it on the ballot if we can even make it in April. And if not, you know when we get to vote on it? November of twenty-four. You're two miles down the road before we get out of the starting block.
I, I, I mean, if, if this was reversed, would you think it would be fair for you guys to own property and we tax yours?
Yes, because we do a lot for those people.
We do a lot for our citizens too, we got some.
I understand that, but these people do, do come to our township and use our dumpster program, to use our food giveaway program, to use our general assistance. There's a lot there, guys. There's a lot more than I think could ever one of you realize here. Townships are good government.
I think the issue is, we're just trying to, you know, take care of our citizens and save them a little money, you know, on, on, from, you know, the double tax thing. That's what it sounds like to me, and, you know, I think that's a fair question to be asked of the people like we talked about. Least we could do is ask the people what their thoughts is.
Thank you. I didn't know if Dan Smith or Cap O'Keefe wanted to come up. Or Dan Smith, I didn't know if he wanted to come up or not.
Double time, Cap?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have a question or?
No, I just didn't know if Dan Smith had signed up as well, so I just didn't know if there's additional comments or not.
Cap speaking for me.
Okay, thank you. Very good.
We okay?
That's good.
Well, I can do a little soft shoe.
Please.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes, six voting yes, four voting no, and one voting present. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is number twenty-two-two-dash-three-seven-seven, an ordinance approving the location of sketch map of Isles Junction West Subdivision for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-three-seven-seven on final passage.
So moved.
I can't.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, can we do a, I'm gonna just vote on this ordinance and the next two.
Yes, three-thirties, or three-seven-seven, three-seventy-eight, and three-seventy-nine, please.
I'm not spoke, has been requested for three-seven-seven, three-seven-eight, and three-seven-nine. And seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item twenty-two-two-dash-three-seven-eight, an ordinance regarding the variance request of section one-five-five-point-one-five-eight-B two pertaining to lots and lot arrangement for Isles Junction West Subdivision for the Office of Public Works. And agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-three-seven-nine, ordinance regarding the variance request of section one-five-three-point-one-five-seven-L pertaining to the restriction of access in Isles Junction West Subdivision for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion, place those agenda numbers on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Alderman McMenam.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna get into the weeds on this because we kind of voted on this almost four years ago. I'm against this because we're gonna do some curb cuts where, from my research of the legal paperwork going back to Mayor Hacera's time period, I don't think we're obligated to make those curb cuts in an area that I dot was against the curb cuts. But I don't wanna re-discuss this whole issue, but I'm just gonna be consistent with my vote four years ago.
Thanks, Joe.
And therefore vote no.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open.
Oh, sorry.
And the ordinance has passed, is eight voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two-dash-three-eighty, ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of nine million dollars for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-three-eighty on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of the motion or the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, eight, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two-dash-three-ninety-seven, oh, we already did that one, sorry. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two-dash-zero-four-three, or four-zero-three, an ordinance amending ordinance number two-nine-nine-dash-zero-seven-dash-two-two by continuing to provide financial assistance on a matching basis of fifty-fifty matching basis except those applicants who earn eighty percent or less of the median income as established under HUD guidelines, financial assistance would be provided on a ten percent to ninety percent matching basis for the exterior rehabilitation program utilizing the Far East Tax Increment Finance Funds for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-four-zero-three on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, chair will entertain a motion, proposed amendment number one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Corporal Counsel, if you could go over the amendment, please.
You, you may recall that there was a discussion at the committee meeting with this being reviewed with a proposed amendment that's been reduced to writing that has been provided this evening. Essentially, it provides for increasing the amount to, not to exceed twenty-five thousand. It does increase the initial program to twenty-five-seventy-five, then with a ten-nine, a ten-to-ninety ratio based on certain income guidelines. It does provide for a, up to a ten-thousand-dollar down payment assistance program for purchasing homes that may be combined with the program, however, the total may not exceed twenty-five thousand. There was also a discussion to extend the program to the S.H.A.Pillsbury TIF, and there's a separate ordinance, because we've always presented them for each, for each TIF, that would be added tonight, a separate ordinance for first reading, but paralleling exactly what you have before you. So the amendment clarifies certain eligibility and also increases certain levels of eligibility as discussed at the committee meeting.
Alderman Gregory?
I just, it's, it's just a typo on the, on the screen. It says fifty-fifty, it says twenty-five-seventy-five, and as well as on the paper, but it is correct in the, in the details.
Very good. Okay.
I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Can you please tell me again why they were separated out?
Ordinarily, we, when we have presented programs for the TIFs, we, for example, the initial one for Enos Park was a separate individual program ordinance for that TIF. Then there was a separate one for the Far East TIF. So traditionally, what we've done when they're dealing with different TIF, districts, TIF programs, we put them in individual ordinances. So you have a separate ordinance that is on first reading for tonight that parallels what you're discussing right now, but for the S.H.A.Pillsbury TIF, that's to be added to the agenda for first reading.
Okay, well, I, I, we'll talk later, okay.
Is that all right, Alderman, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's fine, no, I just.
I think it's more of a.
It, it's fine because it's parallel, but I, you know, I've just recently been getting calls, you know, from Pillsbury area that, you know, they say, Alderman Williams, we appreciate you trying to help us with the ten-ninety, but we're eighty percent rental, and, and I never knew that. They said, we're between eighty and eighty-five percent rental, so these places you're trying to fix and improve, we still can't. But that, but that's why I said I'll, I'll talk with you later. We, but, but I appreciate getting what we, we're gonna get, and, you know, like them, I'm happy about that, but I found that amazing, when, when they explained that to me.
Actually, it'll work out better splitting them up, as you'd be able to try to address that when it's introduced in council.
And, and.
And there, there has been, to, to help here a little bit, what the mayor indicated is correct, because you may recall that there's been these prior programs, but then there has been follow-on amendments that, for example, make adjustments and so on, based on what's, you know, what becomes known from the applicants. So you have the opportunity in each of these instances, Enos Park, Far East TIF, and also S.H.A., to adjust the program, you know, based on what, what you deem is appropriate.
Thank you.
Alderman McMenam?
Just a question, what's the source of funding for this program?
Well, former TIF.
TIF. It's coming from the TIF?
Far East and S.H.A.
I think in the, maybe I got this wrong, but I wasn't here last week, but in the, in the analysis sheet for the ordinance, I thought it said Fund Zero-Zero-One, which would be the corporate fund, but it's coming from the TIF. Okay, thank you.
We, we'll double check to make sure there's not a typo, but it, these are, each of these are TIF Tax Increment Finance Programs for rehand, but we'll check, we'll double check that.
Alderman Gregory?
I just, I just wanna say, well, you know, when, when, I did think about our, our home ownership in, in, you know, the total east side, so that's, you know, that's why I wanted to put that ten percent, up to ten thousand dollars to help buy some of the homes, you know, in, in these, we have citizens both in the, you know, I represent some of the Pillsbury area too, and, and so the goal is to create and promote more home ownership in, in the various homes that people live in. We have people in, you know, have, have been renting for five, ten years, and, you know, hopefully they'll move to, to purchase the homes that they love and they've been staying in so long, and, you know, move into that, hopefully they'll have property owners that will, will wanna work with them on that. So that's the goal, and, and I realized that, and I thought that was a way to, to, to help all parties, even those who don't own houses. I don't own my own house either, so I, I, I get it totally. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All in favor, or, there's a motion on the ordinance as amended, and is there a motion for that as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the ordinance as amended passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two-dash-four-twenty, an ordinance authorizing agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company LLC in the amount of five million, one hundred eighty-one thousand dollars for the future purchase, sale, and exchange of real property, SR zero-one-three-six relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-four-twenty on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Alderman McMenam.
Mr. Mayor, this seems unusual, like, maybe that's a fair word, fair word to use. This is on emergency passage, and if we don't pass it, the cost goes up. How did we get so far behind where it has to be on emergency passage for a five million dollar spending for something, a project that's been in the works for eight years? I don't understand that.
We actually started negotiating with them back in twenty-nineteen and made our initial offer, however, we got stalled for, for, for a little while, and we're going back and forth. They ended up getting a legal team involved. However, they have been good partners for, for the most part over, over the length of the project, and it's towards the end of their third quarter, and they need to basically have it to clean up their books, basically by September thirtieth, and unfortunately, we've been waiting for the paperwork from them, and they were a little late in getting it, so we finally got off the paperwork that we needed, and, and now we have it, and, and they said basically, if we get it closed by then, by September thirtieth, then we wouldn't get the five percent increase in the cost, which would be an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars for the entire project, so we're trying to basically save, save the project.
So it seems kinda heavy-handed to me that Norfolk and Southern is putting pressure on us and saying if we don't approve this right this minute, they're gonna try to get more money from us. When was the appraisal performed on this property, and, and who was the appraiser?
The appraisal was done way before, I wanna say in like September, I'm Steve.
And Steve Hanson, sorry.
I'm sorry, with Hanson, I'm sorry. The appraisal was done probably in, I wanna say in April of two thousand and nineteen, and the offer, and it was done by an appraiser from the Chicago area that is used to dealing with railroads.
Okay, are we going with the appraised amount on this ordinance?
The appraised amount was only for purchasing the property, okay? It didn't include relocation, and, you know, this, this particular property owner, NS, they're both eligible for both acquisition and relocation. This extra amount is to really relieve us of any relocation payments, and it's, I, I mean, I can, I can go through facts and figures, but it's, it's really a good deal.
Well, I, I, I just find this highly unusual, that something, amount this large with an appraisal three years ago, and all of a sudden it gets to our desk right now at this point in time. I don't know if the problem is Hanson, or Public Works, or Norfolk and Southern, but Norfolk and Southern is putting pressure on us to, to pass this, or, you know, they'll up the charge. I, I, there's something that doesn't seem right here to me, that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it was very last minute, it, our hands were a little tied, and I know that they have, they're, they're, I don't know exactly how their accounting works and getting it done before the third quarter, they, they are, were pushing us on it. We did go back and forth, the initial, the initial counteroffer was sixteen million dollars from them, they did show some supporting costs for cost to cure, basically to do sightings in the, in the range of ten million dollars, as well as some other, some other things, and it is a unique land act purchase. Usually, you're not purchasing from the railroad, so that, that did make it a little unique, but I, I agree, they, they were very slow, they were very slow along the way, we've been trying to push them along the way, and then all of a sudden, it was hurry up and get it done, unfortunately, and I apologize for that.
Is this property, does it include what used to be called the Transfer Yard of Norfolk and Southern?
That's correct. That's the, about approximately eight-point-four acres, basically, and that's, that's the area.
And so will the city of Springfield then own that property, the Transfer Yard? It'll be ours, it won't be I Dot's or any other entity, is that correct?
That's correct. The remainder will be ours. A portion will be obviously for the Union Pacific Corridor, which I think is an entire fourteen acres, but a portion will be for Union Pacific, and then a portion will be for the Norfolk Southern remainder for the tracks to go through, and then we will have the remainder basically to the, to the east, and then there's also a portion to the west by Mervis, Mervis Supply and the SMTD station that, that's being purchased.
Do you have a rough idea of what amount of acreage is left over that will not be taken up by the corridor, the rail corridor?
Yeah, I think it was eight, eight, yeah, about eight-point-four, I believe.
Okay, so that's some valuable property that.
Eight-point-four, one-one acres in fee simple, and then point-oh-two-eight acres in permanent easement.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I feel uncomfortable with this, but it is what it is.
And it is all being reimbursed through the, through the project, so it's no, no city funds, we're just managing the project.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open for emergency passage. And the ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022-421, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education of Springfield School District 186 regarding school safety officers from August 15th, 2022 through June 2nd, 2023 for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion placed agenda number 2022-421 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
I just, I just wanna say this, I, I think this is a good thing for our schools, um, definitely, and, and, and I hope that we can bridge this with our focus deterrence and, 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 um, work together to try to do some of that. It ain't gotta come up here, it's all good, I just.
Oh, no, we like putting them on the spot. Okay, we'll save it for later. Alderman Redpath.
What's the finances on this? Are they reimbursing our, the police officers or how that's working?
Yep.
I don't believe there's any, uh, changes to this from the past agreements, just redoing what we've done in the past where they do reimburse, um, for some of the salary, I don't believe any of the fringes for the three officers that are in the high schools.
So, so they are financially handling this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Julie Zokerdarm.
I believe anything's changed in this agreement from, uh, from past years.
Correct.
Is it corporation counsel?
75%. Um, four officers.
Say that again, Julie, I didn't hear you.
Roughly 75% of four.
75% of four officers.
There's a worksheet that's attached to the ordinance to give all the total fringes and things, but I have confirmed that we'll have the officers.
Do we have the sheet?
Yes.
It's in your attachment up there in the corner.
On the attachments, on your.
Chuck, on your computer.
Oh, it's on the computer?
He good.
Under attachments?
I can't hear you.
The attachment on your computer, up in the right-hand corner.
Click on that where it says attachments.
All right. 75%? Okay.
And, I mean, I believe just for clarification, it's, it's the same as it's always been. In other words, the program's been in place for, uh, multiple years, so there, it's the same formulation as been in the past, is my understanding.
And so this is, this is a higher back situation and it's not, uh?
No, no, these are our school resource officers that are assigned to the high schools.
Not any, any additional?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the ordinance vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2022-422, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of RFP PW23-21 for an agreement with Clean Harbors Environmental Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $115,000 for household hazardous waste collection and disposal services for a one-day collection on October 22nd, 2022 for the Office of Public Works.
So moved, second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay, motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2022-423, ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW23-08-56 with Parkland Environmental Group, Inc., for the demolition of 36 residential properties in an amount not to exceed $480,700 for the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay, motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2022-424, ordinance authorizing the creation of an exterior and interior rehabilitation program and for homeowner down payment assistance utilizing SHA tax increment finance funds in an amount not to exceed $350,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay, motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the council?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna start off with the positive news. We had an amazing turnout for our 34th Annual, um, Edwards Place Art Fair and, um, an enormous amount of foot traffic for our Enos Park home tour. Um, I do wanna thank everybody for coming out. The weather was pretty sizzling, but we made it through with drinks and I think I got a little bit of a suntan. And then going over to, um, some of the negative news, but still look at it a little positive. The tragic incidents that happened throughout Ward 5 this weekend was really unbearable with the phone calls, the text messages from the shooting downtown to literally, um, having a shooting right a block away at the park in Enos Park. And I'm happy that this individual is okay, but, um, nobody should have to feel unsafe at 2 o'clock in the afternoon with their child in the park and get hit with a bullet. So we're like lucky that that's not a life that's lost. Um, you know, I just wanna say that we're, we are being proactive. I think what we're doing in the neighborhoods with these police walks, walks are, um, building a trust with the community, but we're going to actively do more. And I spoke with Chief Scarlett and Chief Josh and asked him to come up tonight to talk briefly about it and was speaking with the mayor about more proactive measures that we can take downtown. Saturday night I was at Buzzbomb, we had a very huge presence of officers that I spoke with, they were around, but when you have something like a drive-by, you just never know where a bullet is coming from. And we're so lucky when you see 17 rounds going off downtown that that wasn't 17 people dying.
Um, I did speak with, uh, Alderman Purchase and the mayor this week regarding the shootings, the incidents that occurred. Um, I don't wanna get too far into the details on what we know about the downtown shooting, but, um, we are working with the bar owners to hopefully get a little more information about some of the events that they are bringing in to downtown, especially the later ones. You know, we don't have these issues with the earlier events, the festivals and those type of things. It's the, uh, late night, um, concerts and things that are occurring at those, um, bars. And so getting some information about when those are occurring so that, uh, you know, maybe we can increase enforcement, um, not just in the downtown area, but, you know, these type of events tend to draw crowds in from outside the city and watching some of those corridors and, uh, increasing our enforcement efforts there along with Illinois State Police who has assisted in the past. And, you know, just having a presence down there and working with the bar owners to also possibly have some off-duty officers or additional security for their events when they are having those larger events.
Thank you, and I know that, um, some of the neighbors in the surrounding area of Enos Park is asking, are we gonna have extra patrol just not knowing what happened because they felt it was intentional, uh, incident that took place? Um, and these are people that's watching tonight to hear from you, 'cause I told them you would be speaking.
Uh, you know, we will, I feel like we have a, a presence in Enos Park a lot, but we will continue to keep that, uh, those numbers of officers in those areas up. Um, the incident in the park, from what we understand is that there was a, some sort of argument that occurred. One of those subjects maybe was already armed while in the park and, uh, another subject retrieved a firearm from a car. And these are, you know, why we continue to push our officers out there and they are doing an amazing job recovering firearms. You know, this year, I know we've said it, every time we've been up here, we're gonna, you know, recover more firearms this year than we did last year and last year was a record year for us. You know, we continue to make arrests, uh, the officers are out there, they're using the tools that you all have funded with Flock and with ShotSpotter to help make those arrests and identify suspects. And, uh, we are very successful at that, you know, we're not gonna catch everyone and continue to ask for the community's support and help with identifying those individuals.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a key component. Someone knows something, they should let us know so we can stop it from happening again with that particular individual.
We had one of those this week where, you know, and it happens a lot, where people call and say, I know someone who's got a gun, um, we got it turned over, the gun turned out to be stolen, um, I believe out of Kentucky. Um, so, you know, those are things that definitely help, you know, that could have been a shooting that was prevented because someone called and reported it.
Or someone calls and say they see suspicious activity, something that doesn't look normal in the area.
Absolutely.
So any questions for the Assistant Chief?
Well, mine.
Alderwoman DeSenzio, then we'll go down the line if.
Thank you.
You do have something for him.
Mine does go along with this. Um, Alderwoman, I'm sorry, this was your initiation into this, but those of us that have been sitting around the horseshoe, uh, have all dealt with it multiple times. And it's horri, it's horrible. It's an awful feeling, you have no control over it. Um, my first experience with it was when a 12-year-old accidentally shot a, and killed a 13-year-old. Um, that was my first experience. So, you know, we, I don't know what we do as a community more than what we're doing. But I did have an incident in my ward last night where I keep trying to get information from the Springfield Police Department and I can't get it. So I have concerned neighbors, concerned citizens, this is a low-crime area, and I've asked multiple times from last night through today and I can't get the information. So I can't reassure my neighbors what's going on in their neighborhood. And I've brought this up before and they understand if there's an investigation going on, I get it and they get it too, but you have to give them something because otherwise they're just wondering, you know, well, am I in danger? Can I, my kids go out and play? I mean, what's going on here? So there has to be some sort of increased communication. Um, it's very frustrating. It's frustrating for me, it's frustrating for the neighbors and we, we've gotta do something to make sure, to open the lines of communication between the Springfield Police Department and the neighborhoods that are affected when, when something happens. And it might be something that's none of their business, but they, they, at least we can tell them that.
You know, and I don't know specifically, um, what your situation is, I'd be happy to talk with you afterwards and maybe we can, uh?
The chief knows and Officer Musson knows, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I think it was about two weeks ago, we had an incident, um, where there was a threat called into one of the schools, uh, we had, you know, and we were out in front of that, we've had media, um, notices going out, we had the subject downtown with a rifle. So we are, I feel like, doing better at that and I think there's always room for improvement and we will continue to work to get those messages out to the community when appropriate.
Yeah, I think it's helpful if, uh, if the public knows if it's an isolated incident or if, you know, the person knew the person, I think, um.
Or if it's a mental health issue. I mean, that's, a lot of those are, this is a mental health emergency and that, that kinda tells the person, the neighborhood that, okay, this is one person that's suffering su, something and they're going to get help. The police are there to help them. No one else in the neighborhood is, you know, threatened. Um, we have to do a better job of that because we are on alert all the time and.
Text messages.
I mean, people have no problem texting us at 3:00 in the morning or at 6:00 in the morning or, it's just, you know, we get, and we get it, we understand, we represent, you know, our residents, but it, when we don't, we haven't, we have nothing to tell them, it's, it's incredibly frustrating.
Alderman McMenamah.
Assistant Chief, thanks for, uh, being here tonight. Uh, regarding the Fifth and Washington incident, um, 17-plus rounds fired. Um, you're going into this and trying to determine the source of the problem, um, where it came from possibly and so forth. And I, I know we've got two surveillance cameras there at the corner of Fifth and Washington. And my question is, um, when do you think you'll have enough information to provide additional, um, reporting to the city council?
You know, I hate to put a timeline on that, you know, to specifically, um, and for me to give you any of the details might provide a little too much for, let people know a little too much about, uh, what we're looking into and I just am not prepared to do that tonight and I'd be happy to talk with you after, but, uh, I don't think in a.
Should we be talking days, weeks? What, what are we talking?
You know, I can't answer that, sir, at this time. It's, you know, an investigation, you know, those are difficult at times when, uh?
Are you making progress?
There is progress that is being made and, uh, you know, as I stated earlier, we're using, uh, you know, the tools that, uh, you all have helped fund and, uh, there is some success there and I just don't wanna go any further than that at this time.
Well, I'm glad you used all the tools that we try to provide and, um, uh, we appreciate the detective unit, uh, doing everything they can do to get to the bottom of this. So thank you, Assistant Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chief, uh, and, and thank you, uh, Alderwoman DeSenzio for that, 'cause that was, you know, gonna be my exact sentiments. You know, we, you know, um, gunshots and, you know, death, quite frankly, is no, no stranger in, in, in the community I represent and, you know, we've, we've made a long, a lot of strides and, you know, I, I just try to keep, um, pressing that, you know, uh, this violence prevention piece, I, I, I would love to see, uh, more walks in, you know, the east side community. Um, that railroad track is a true barrier, you know, it, 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 a lot of times, man, you know, for our community, you know, we, we go through this all the time and, you know, when it happens elsewhere, it's just so much attention on it. And, and, and I talked to a mother last night and, you know, we're gonna talk about this, but she's so frustrated because she, she, she knows nothing about her son's death and she just keeps crying and crying and crying and that's what bothers me the most, is, is talking to the mothers, the 10th, the 10th Street, I was on scene for that triple murder. People I know I've worked with all my life, I'm from here. And so those are the things that, that, that really bother me is the, is the, is the parents, the mothers, you know, and, and, you know, for our community, I just, I just hope that, that we don't get left out as far as, uh, the community engagement. I'm not talking about just patrols and I commend you guys on, on getting guns off the street. I've supported, uh, ShotSpotter and every tool that we need to, to get illegal guns off the street. Um, but, but I do think that, that we have an opportunity to do more in our community and, and, um, have a more of a, a, um, I don't wanna say friendly presence, but a, a, a different presence than arresting people for guns and things in, in, in this community. Um, and I'll help any, any type of way I can. You guys do do that when I speak on it. I, I just don't wanna speak on it, I don't wanna be there, I don't wanna take pictures, I just wanna see it in our community other than just pulling people over and stuff like that, so I appreciate it.
You know, that has been a, uh, focus of the Springfield Police Department, was under Chief Winslow and it continues and even increased under Chief Scarlett. You know, our opportunities to get out into the community with, uh, meet and greets, bridging the gap barbecue. We've got a, uh, thing we're doing with ShotSpotter coming up in October, um, that, uh, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, give some information about in the coming weeks and that will include not just the police department, but other city agencies to get involved and, uh, out in the community. So those are things that we focus on.
I appreciate it.
And we're constantly improving.
Appreciate you. Alderman Williams.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I, I, on weapons, on guns, uh, you know, I think the majority of the community, uh, understands when it's under investigation, you can't talk about it. And, you know, there has to be that time period to allow you to do your job or the detectives to do their job, but where the frustration is coming in is on the weapons, the guns. When the 16-year-olds, one killed the other, another one shot the other one and, and they're 16, so I'm like, when's the newspaper gonna say, here who owned the gun? This is how they got? We never hear about the actual weapons. And I'm sitting there arguing with the Neighborhood Association going, well, I get emails and it shows me pictures, you know, of confiscate, well, we need to find a way to, once we identify those guns, or, or is there a law? Maybe there's a law that doesn't allow you to publicly say, you know, this gun belonged to this parent or this is how the 16-year-old got the gun. I mean, I'm not saying, I may be asking for something that's illegal. I mean, maybe you're the corporate counsel though.
Might be able to answer your question. Um, we do look at that, you know, I mentioned the one that was stolen out of Kentucky that recovered this week, another incident, uh, ShotSpotter incident. We were alerted to a backyard, officers came into contact with the subject who was still armed. Um, that gun turned out, I believe, to be stolen out of St. Louis. Um, so, you know, a lot of times it's a stolen firearm, which, you know, doesn't really help us in your situation. Um, for every firearm that we recover, we run a trace through the ETF on and we have an ATF officer, agent, liaison who is embedded within the Springfield Police Department. He has an office with our investigators and that is a, a piece of every investigation is identifying where those guns come from, trying to identify sources if there's someone out there who is purchasing guns, um, straw purchases to provide them to, uh, subjects or gang members, you know, that is. you know, that is something that we work with, we work with the gun stores in the community to identify those individuals.
I mean, I think all those things are great, I'm just asking for publicity on where the gun comes from to the public. Which parent did not take care of that gun and safeguard that gun that the kid got a hold? Or, yeah, he tried to keep it safe, but the kid stole it. We don't get enough stories like that, so it seems like kids can have guns in Springfield, and they can shoot each other and kill each other, and then we don't ever hear that side of it. We hear about the front row, you know, all the other stuff, and I'm just asking, is there a way to start identifying the gun owner? Who should have been responsible? No matter if it's in Kentucky, Indiana, Illinois, you know, or is that against the law? It might be against the law.
I'll have to take a look and let you know on that, I'm not sure-
Thank you.
-you know, if that's something that we would want to get into or not.
Yeah, well, I'm saying it would be a deterrence. I mean, if somebody in my family got a hold of my gun and committed a crime, and then I read in the paper, or Illinois Time or something, look, such and such didn't take care of his gun. I mean, anything that would deter, that's very impactful in some communities, I'll say, because people will feel real bad that they didn't safeguard the gun. And I always say, well, maybe it's against the law, they can't tell us.
I don't know that we would be able to identify the individuals, but we may be able to identify the relationship on where the game came from, that might be, that we'll look at.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to strongly encourage to piggybacking off of Alderman Gregory, even though he said he don't want to do the pictures, I'm going to continue doing them. But I think that it gives some great positivity on the walks to show people of walking with the community and with your older persons too, so maybe that could be implemented over there a lot more as well, too.
You want me to speak?
You can.
Because, you know, I'm really-
That's great participation.
I wasn't speaking on you, I'm speaking on my relationship with the police and how far I've come with them to even have this conversation with them.
Yeah, that would be great, walks.
So, listen, listen to me. So, what I'm saying is, has nothing to do with you, I'm talking about my own personal relationship, and how I feel that sometimes they shy away from me in doing the things that you're privileged to do, because I'm so much different. So, what I'm saying to you and saying to them is, I don't have to walk, but I don't have to do those things, but my community deserves the same. That's all. Nothing to do with you.
Yeah, I started it with our- our NPOs are really, really important, and I had started something with Officer Tamir, I said, walk in Ward Five Wednesdays, how about we go out and introduce ourselves, and just walk up to some doors and have that friendly face, it's not us coming in a bad way, and just introducing myself and introducing the NPO, and we just decided to get more officers involved, so I think that would be something good to move over into some of the other wards as well. But I know that I specifically requested a lot to say, hey, can we move around to different neighborhoods? And more of my ward is starting to see that, and they're asking like, hey, we want you all in our neighborhood as well.
Very good. Any other questions for A.C. Stunkel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any new business?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Alderwoman DeSenzio?
Thank you, Mayor. Both Alderman Gregory and I probably all day yesterday had calls about the flooded underpass at Ash Street. To my knowledge, it was impassable till 3:00 in the afternoon. It's a brand-new underpass. Was it Laurel or Ash? It was Ash. Laurel. Laurel. So, the even newer one. As you can imagine, our residents were not happy with that at all.
Yeah, so, yes, there was a power failure, basically, and power went out, and unfortunately, it was fluctuating, and I'm not an electrical engineer by any means, so I apologize if I butcher something, Doug, but basically, the thing that protects the pump from burning up shut down the pump, and unfortunately, it shut it down, and we weren't able to get it fixed until today, which we had a bypass solution, and we do have an extra part that then we'll be able to fix it permanently tomorrow, but right now, it did, we did figure out a bypass solution for it, but that was kind of a freak accident, we've not had any issues until today, and we've had numerous rains, we've had some large 50-year rains, but unfortunately, it was kind of a freak accident where the voltage was basically off-kilter, and it shut it down in order to protect the pumps, which is a very valuable asset.
I understand, but you have to under- you have to understand what Ward Six has been through with this rail improvement project, and these closures disrupting their lives for the last several years, and then-
I understand.
This, I mean, these aren't 50-year rains anymore, let's call them what they are, these are monthly rains.
Yeah, now they are.
But they are. So, I- I'm glad to hear that you found a bypass, and I hope we can- we don't have that problem again. I know it's not your fault, but I have to advocate for my ward, and I have- if I got that many calls about it, I'm sure Alderman Gregory got that many calls about it, and it was all over social media, which is very frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's a major safety improvement, you know, you don't have to wait for the trains, it's a lot safer for pedestrians as well, we have the separate-
Not safe if you drown.
So, obviously, yeah, yep, but we did get it fixed, and we have a solution too, and we know if for some reason that happens, we can respond even quicker and have it working within a couple hours.
I appreciate that.
Thanks.
How many gallons does that hold, do you know?
I do not know, off the top of my head.
I don't know if it's half the size of the other ones?
It's- it's a- it still has a fairly decent amount of storage, just the pump stopped working, and we also had a large two-and-a-half-inch rain, but it wasn't- if the pumps were working, it would have been able to handle it, it's just unfortunately, we had the power outage and the voltage got off, so-
Yeah, if you could find out the retention gallons for each underpass, that'd be helpful.
Yep, I can do that.
Thanks. Alderman Gregory?
I just, real quickly, I think that's extremely important, you know, I was going to speak on that, me and Alderwoman DeSenzio definitely spoke on that, because I, you know, I was under the impression on the calls that it was flood-proof, and, you know, I understand that issues do happen, but, you know, so quickly, it just worries the constituents on the eastern part of the tracks and, you know, of being tracked, but none of the others failed, and, you know, I went around, I was actually driving down that one, and it was kind of deep. Some people went through it, you know, some trucks and stuff, but I wasn't going to take mine through that, so, but, um, thank you for the update, and, you know, keep up the good work, tell them to get it fixed.
Thanks. Alderman Repath?
Nate, could you check St. Francis area? They said they were knee-deep in water, and it's- it's an area that's got bad sewer problems out there anyway, that's south of Stevenson Drive there, behind Little Flower Church. Thank you.
Good to hear, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Nate? Very good. Any new business? Alderwoman Purchase?
We have the Mother Road Route 66 this weekend, and it is going to be absolutely fun, and the weather is going to be amazing, so I encourage everyone to come out and see all of the cars, and I'll be dressed up pretty vintage. And then also, too, we have movie night with the YMCA at the Edwards Place from 6:00 to 7:00. There will be games with the Police Department and the Fire Department, and then at 7:30, we will play our Disney movie, and you can bring your furry friends, and your brothers and sisters, and your parents, and come enjoy the night with us, and it'll be in the 80s, so it'll be a nice night.
Alderman Gregory?
I just wanted to, I don't do this normally, but I did want to let everyone know, The Style of Hope is at the Bank of Springfield on this weekend, or Thursday, and it's a benefit with entertainment to really help Hope Schools Youth and things. I'll be modeling in it from some Shields gear, so, you know, the tickets are only $45, so come on out and support those young people. It's new, yeah, modeling, man.
Pass model if you need some tips.
That'd be worth the price of admission.
At Style of Hope.
I need it, I need it, but no, it- I really did, she did send that email to us, so I just wanted to say that, I think that's important. It's the first that I ever knew about it, so I wanted to get that out to our constituents, thank you.
Any other new business?
Oh.
Alderwoman DeSenzio?
I just want to thank Amanda Long for going above and beyond today, she helped me out, she- I saw that she left, but she really helped me out with something that had nothing to do with her, so I just wanted to give her a-
She's really cool.
-big shout-out, because she was- she did great work today.
Very good. Any other new business? We do have a few people that signed up, Margaret Franklin? If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Margaret Franklin, and I live at 1233 North 14th Street. We gave each of you, older people, older persons, older- what I'm here about. My main concern is at 1208 North 13th Street. It's a residence, I know it's a residence because I used to live there. Right now, there is a business called PHP that is a tree service. They have taken up the entire block. You cannot even get, if you're going off of North Grant onto 13th Street, they've got one side of the street, there's people that live on the other side that has a garage, and they've got stuff out there on the side of the street. The road is very narrow anyway, okay? So, last night, my husband and I were coming home, and there was a car that flew over the railroad tracks, I kid you not. And if my husband had not pulled over to the side, it would have been a deadhead on. What I'm saying is, is that PHP has got no business running a business out of a residence. I have talked to Mr. Williams about it, as I said, there's a lot of things on here, but there's no sidewalks on either side of the street, so you cannot use sidewalks. There's the railroad tracks right there by their house, they've got that whole way taken up by a big old motor home, they've got all kinds of things. I just want to know, as a concerned resident of the neighborhood, why this is being allowed?
Yeah, on that issue, real quick, he had passed along, and the Chief or the police will go out there and take a look at it. But, yeah, I drove by there the other day and saw the number of trucks parked there.
Oh, my God, there's- there's big old trucks. I mean, like I said, there's a motor home there.
Right.
It's unreal. But the other thing I wanted to know about is that we have a lot of addresses here on this piece of paper that need to be addressed. We have some houses that need to be torn down, that are burnt homes, there is trash everywhere. Where we live, the alley right behind our house is where there's mattresses, there's chairs, there's unreal stuff in that alley. Well, of course, it's attracting rodents, which we don't need any more of, but I'm just with, the trash is unbelievable, but what I don't understand is why the city gets paid to come out there and pick up that stuff? Why are they not finding out who is fly dumping and get this resolved? That's all I'm asking for. I'm not going to continue to see the trash on North 14th Street, no, I'm not the Neighborhood Association President, I've been on his case every day. So, all I'm wanting to know is, is why that neighborhood right there of 13th and 14th is just like, I mean, yeah, I can call Mr. Williams, sometimes I get a hold of him, sometimes I don't. He did come over the other day, we addressed some things with him. But I would like to see our Alderman in our neighborhood a little bit more than what we do. I would like to see him come over and personally, which he did the other day, after he was called to come over, to take a look at the stuff. He rode around, he's aware of what's going on, so all I'm asking for is that City Council do something about our problems, instead of us just being kind of neglected, and that's how I feel.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll give this list to Public Works, but we'll have them do a sweep of the area with regards to that.
We would appreciate that very much.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so, Mayor, if you would, please, I mean, I, so this, everything she said is pretty much on target. However, what I think she doesn't understand is, a lot of this stuff is being dealt with as we speak, the burnt-out houses, the demolitions, we've done more demolitions over there than anywhere else in my ward, and the thing I had to learn about demolitions, that it's a legal process. So, it can be burnt up and sit there and sit there, but you're going through courts and you're dealing with ownership, and it's just not that simple. So, I think sometimes Ms. Franklin wishes it would be faster, but that doesn't mean that Public Works isn't, you know, doing the processes on that. On this company here, it did amaze me as well, and Mac's not here, is he? But Mac is aware in zoning, and he's working on what's what, how's it zoned and all that stuff. However, that company's been there forever, it seems like. I know as for as long as I've been up here, that company's been in existence. Okay, so I don't know why they get to operate that way, and maybe Daryl's going to tell us, so I'll let Public Works handle it from here. But I want to say one thing to you as a constituent, so I couldn't stop you from coming, but I just feel like these kind of issues, once the departments have them, I know a lot of my people, is Alice here? You know, they think when they come and they say it, it's more impactful, and I'm trying to slow that down to say, give people a chance to do their jobs, because half of this list I'm reading, I know between me and Richmond, what's his name, Chris Richmond with the Pillsbury Group, we have all these addresses and work, and we know the schedules of the demolitions, and three have been done on North 14th, probably this summer, three came down. Yeah, but see, you can't make it be demolished, it's a legal process, but I'll let Harris talk to it, tell you about it.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman, first of all, the first issue was 1208 North 13th, I believe you spoke of, and as we shared with not only the Alderman, also with the Franklins, is that at 1208 on September 16th, the letter did go out, we first had to do an investigation. I don't know if you understand the zoning process, but someone makes a complaint, they say there's trucks there, and there's things there. Thank God, we got a great team of union workers, IBW, Barb in particular, that had to go out there and wait, and catch the person, and catch the trucks and stuff, and sometimes that's not done on normal work hours, it's on later work hours, early in the morning, four or five o'clock in the morning, to catch them, to take pictures, so we have evidence to present to the courts, so we can move swiftly. Letter did go out to the particular violator at 1208 North 13th on September 16th, the letter is out, the letter basically says four or five different violations, and also states that they don't reply within a certain amount of date, it goes automatically to our court process. So, again, our team of a great union worker, we're asking IBW to do a great fantastic job, once we have a complaint and stuff there, you gotta give us a little time to catch them, and I think Conley's aware of that, because we have a similar situation. And sometimes, we're not sharing everything with the public, each and every step, but sometimes it's past working hours, sometimes way before working hours. The other items that you're talking about is correct, we have a, I think you guys just voted for a RP that we have for demolitions, many of the demolitions you talked about is in an RP. Prior to that, as of January 1st, I think we tore down about 20 night homes ourselves, starting of the year, we continue to tear down Glenwood.
I was just waiting on that. Five years, took five years.
Other properties, but Alderman Roy Williams, correct, a lot of times, she doesn't take phone calls from a lot of times the resident, but Roy and myself have went up and down Pillsbury, not anybody knowing, they wrote up things, and he showed me things, and talked about things that we need to address, so did Alderman Gregory, I've done the same thing with other Aldermen here as well, we work hard to try to get these things done, but there's also rules and there's processes, and a lot of times, we do a violation, they still have seven days to abate. That means we're giving them an opportunity, giving them a warning, saying there's a particular problem there, we have seven days to abate. After that, we take over, or we take to the courts. That's the process, it gives everyone the opportunity, we want them to correct it. We don't use your textile to correct it, if we can get the property owner to correct it. That's our way of doing things, I think it's a good, effective way. All the concerns of Mrs. Franklin and others, we get them, our team takes a look at them, they automatically go on the system, and we address it that day, within 24 to 48 hours, someone's out there taking, doing an inspection. That's good, efficient government. Now, the particular area you're talking about, we looked at it, about 35 to 40 type complaints within the last month, so we addressed it. So, a lot of times, you say, well, I see trash, well, I tell that's repeated, that's not something that we didn't go pick up. Trying those myself, we did a little sting deal, we picked up trash, and literally, within three hours, there was more. But I did have pictures showing that we did pick it up. So, again, work with us, we'll work with you as we always have, but anytime you have a complaint, call 789-2167, and we're on it.
Well, Daryl, what I'll say to you is, that the fly dumping piece that she's describing is kind of daily, you have picked it up, and then there's new fly dumping, so I haven't figured out if it's like certain trucks that charge these people, and they know they don't want to pay the dump price, so they found out they can go over there and just dump it, but it's just new dumping. And so, I understand her frustration, but she- I want her to- And so I understand her frustration, but she, I want her to understand that's not the same couch. That's not the same mattress, you know? And it happens more, this is a tough area. It's the same area I'm talking about on, on this S.H.A. Tiff. I'm always bringing up Pillsbury. I always talk about this area. It, it is, you know, Sean wants to say he has the worst area, but I know Pillsbury is the worst area. And we're trying to work hard on, on, on changing Pillsbury. You know, as they get their new high school out there, and we start coming back south, all that's going to have to change. And it starts with, with us doing this kind of stuff.
I think one of the major problems we have, and we've been working with the county on this, is that there's only a few people that's licensed to haul and get rid of rap, refugees. But you're finding out a lot of by-night type workers, I wouldn't call them. Residents think they're getting a great deal because someone comes to them and says, I can take care of it for $20.
Yeah, cheaper.
Well, guess what that $20 is going to, is going to some vacant lot, or goes to somebody's property, or goes to someone's alley, because they're not properly disposing of it. We only have three or four, I think, haulers that have the license to do so. But you have to check the pages, you'll find there's a litany of folks saying that they can haul.
Well, we appreciate your good work.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Alderman Conley?
Wait, Mr. Harris, see, you can't, can't run that fast. I, I'm sorry, would it be possible for us to publish the list of the licensed haulers, at least on, on Public Works page? So that we can refer people to those?
I'll work with Julia on that and talk about that. That's no problem. It's not, it's not that many, I can tell you that. So yes, we could do that.
It just, I mean, it's because I, you know, I try to tell people that all the time, you know, make sure you're dealing with someone who's licensed. And then, then, you know, the next question is, who's licensed? And so if we could have something to refer people to, so that we can educate them, and then they can know, you know, if you're not getting someone off of this list, you may very well be contributing to, you know, another part of our town's continuing problems. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, I'm in.
Good idea.
Next we have is Tashiana Bankhead.
Good evening. My name is Tashiana Bankhead. I reside in Ward Six. Thank you, Mayor Langfielder and City Council for your time this evening. I'm a community organizer with Faith Coalition for the Common Good. We would like to invite the mayor, city council, local officials, and department chairs to a public SEJA screening, which is no, no climate, no equity, no deal. This screening will take place next Thursday, September 29th, 2020. Last year, SEJA, last year, Illinois made history by passing the most equitable clean jobs bill in the country, known as the Climate and Equal Jobs Act, or SEJA. Now, we're excited to share a new short film that documents all the work that went on to pass the landmarking legislation, which was organized by the Illinois Clean Jobs Coalition, which Faith Coalition's a part of. SEJA is the nation-leading law that creates jobs in the clean energy economy for people of color, women, coal communities, and returning citizens. In the near future, Decatur, Champaign, and Peoria will implement job hubs for training for those who are interested in the new clean job industry, but especially for those living in coal communities. SEJA protects public health from pollution, gives an opportunity for equal, equality in solar, and a pathway to electrifying our transportation when it comes to personal transportation, school buses, and public. This film shows a promising future for our state and also for our city. So Faith Coalition is excited to host this event at the Illinois State Museum. Doors will open at 5:30 p.m., with the screening beginning at 6 p.m. The screening is about 20 minutes in length, so please be sure to arrive on time. There will be a short Q and A with a following of reception. There is no cost for this attendance. This is open for the community. And I have admission tickets for each of you and for anyone who is interested in attending. And I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, you can pass those around if you like. Next is Charlotte Johnson.
Tasha, you just want to put them, we'll pass them for you.
Thank you. Tremaine Brown? Tremaine here? Your motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second.
Move second. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, Emma.
Okay, yeah, got to look at this Friday. Thank you.